So I have my evening beer.
Nice.
To have much better sleep.
Yeah, it's still kind of midday for me, so I'm still on coffee.
I know.
Yeah.
But you woke up very early, so.
Well, you know, actually, so I work at an oil refinery, and we're in a shutdown mode right now. So I've been working like 12-hour days. I wake up at about 4:00 a.m., I go work out, I go to work, I get home at about 7:00 p.m. And then, you know, spend some quality time with Paul and cook dinner and then fall asleep. That's about it. Everyone, welcome to Happy Hour. We're just hanging out. There's nothing like super hardcore or official about this one. There are a few announcements I'll make throughout it, but this is just kind of a free-form chat. Hangout. Oh, I got all sorts of people joining. Admit. Admit. I have to say, Andrew, I don't know if you saw in the chat in yours, that ringtone. I remember when I used to have that ringtone on my phone, and I had my phone in my hand for a second, and I almost threw it across the room. I was like, oh, it's going off again.
I was quite difficult to find that.
Oh, that's, was that the old Nokia?
Yeah, that was the old Nokia one, yeah.
Oh, man.
And you've got to go back far enough to find it where it truly is a monotone ringtone.
Oh, I heard it in a movie here recently, and like, I swear, my eyes just got really wide, and I'm like, ah!
Glad to be observed.
One thing when I was watching earlier, I couldn't look at more participants than what was down the side. It wouldn't let me move and see other people. Is there any way of doing that?
Uh, yeah, so if someone's presenting, it kind of dictates how you're gonna see the screen. But like, while we're all here and we're just kind of chatting, what you can do is go to the three little dots on the lower right-hand corner.
Yep.
And click on that, and you'll see a button that says changed layout.
Yep.
Click that and go to tiled.
Yeah, that's what I've got at the moment.
Okay, do you have it scrolled all the way up to 49 people? At the very bottom?
I missed that. Let me try again. Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah, so you can, you can set it so you see only like four or five people, or you can set it so you can see up to 49 people.
Yeah.
Which, uh, we did the winless event here recently, and it was hilarious having it up and watching everyone's screen as they're watching videos, because you would just see this like distant look, and then all of a sudden, like, everyone focuses back on the screen. And it was, it was really fun to watch people watching videos. It was different. Oh, Andrew, I swear to God.
Is this, this is Happy Hour, isn't it?
Oh dang, Lindsay!
Well, my class isn't until 8:30 tomorrow morning.
Did you start that this morning, or did you?
No, no, I just, no, this is Rhonda's.
Oh.
Yeah, no, no.
I was getting ready to yell at him.
For why? What did I do now?
You're digging out my bottle. Leave it alone.
Okay, I'll go get the gin.
Something else.
Hi, Cat.
Uh, Nick, can I ask you a personal question?
And Peter Loop.
Uh, I'm not sure who was just trying to ask me a personal question, but I'm sure, I guess.
And I was going to ask a non-kiting question.
Okay.
My, my heart really completely goes out to you, going, working 12 and 14-hour shift at the, at the power plant. And I understand that you worked and worked so hard to get the certification as an inspector for this whole plant. And now, of course, you're getting the wrong end of the stick for that.
Yes.
But what exactly is going on that requires that kind of commitment? Are they doing some kind of conversion, or is there an inspection going on? Or what, what does 14-hour work at a plant require of an inspector?
Uh, so all refineries and chemical plants have scheduled downtime. Uh, and then what we do is we, we take the units down. We essentially turn off the engine, so to speak, and, uh, we do all of our repairs and some of our bigger-scale maintenance during that timeframe. So I'm spending a lot of time right now, like, climbing into equipment that traditionally has like sulfuric acid and, you know, stuff I don't want to touch. Uh, but they, they pull it down, they clean it out, and I climb around inside it and inspect it. And I also, realistically, what I do is I walk around and I go, ooh, that's rusty. That's rusty. That's rusty too. That's, that's pretty much my job, is going, yep, that's rusty.
That's good. I'm glad somebody is finding the rust.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a difference between good rust and bad rust, right? But, uh, yeah, that's, that's about the extent of my job is, is looking at rusty metal.
Well, do you, can, do you do ultrasound, and you can order x-rays and all that stuff to make sure things aren't cracked and broken and stuff?
Yeah, so I have, uh, I have techs that will actually take the x-rays and I interpret the data. So.
So this won't go on forever?
Uh, it feels like it. No, uh, so this shutdown is supposed to only be six to eight weeks. Uh, but then we have another one right after it for three weeks, and then, yeah. So this is our biggest one in, in over 10 years. And it wasn't supposed to be like this.
Is it safe to have your inspectors be exhausted all the time?
Yeah, well, we do what we do, right? Anyways.
Well, at least, hey, Nick, at least you're not on Mars time like somebody else, you know, where you have to go into your job 40 minutes later every day.
I would love that. I would love that, honestly. But anyhow, uh, welcome everyone to Happy Hour. Uh, I figured, you know, we should have just kind of like a general session where we hang out. We drink our beverage of choice, and, uh, we can share what we love about kite-making workshops. Um, you know, my, my intent, when Linda Larky reached out to me to, you know, kind of help create a virtual Umake, the intent is not to replace the in-person workshops, because those are so awesome. You learn a lot, you get to interact with people. Um, and, you know, you're, you're sitting there for hours actually sewing and, and doing all this stuff, and you share meals with one another. Kind of difficult to do that, especially in the COVID area, or era. Um, but we didn't want to lose the opportunity to kind of hang out with one another and chat and share our love of, of kite-making workshops. Uh, so just kind of looking at the people that are here, I know at least half of you have attended a workshop, and I know there's quite a few of you on here that may never have attended an in-person workshop. So I thought this would be a good chance, uh, for folks to either share what they love about kite-making workshops, or their favorite one that they've been to, or a good memory. And yeah, we might have to use the raise hand function, because I know everyone's gonna be eager to, to share something, so. I think someone just raised their hand. Hold on. Rhonda!
Hello.
Hi.
So you, you put out the question of what do we, um, why attend a workshop? Why go to the trouble, basically? And if I, I'm just gonna try to be real brief, but one of the things that I find is that it's very hard for me to do something creative, um, at home, just because of, um, all the things that I'm taking care of right now, and in the past. But when I go to a workshop, there's this release of spirit, um, a release of, of responsibility, of the things that are every day. And I go into it, into a creative environment where, with an open mind of, yeah, I'd like to do certain things, but on the other hand, being receptive to whatever comes along, I think makes it even more enjoyable experience. Um, I never know who I'm gonna meet, and a good number of you on this screen have been a serendipitous, um, part of attending workshops or attending festivals. And, um, uh, and it's also the creative environment of what if? Oh, you see somebody else who maybe doesn't really know what they're doing, but they're experimenting, and that gets you to try something that you wouldn't normally do at home, because you wouldn't have maybe thought of trying that technique. It's like Mitch's class earlier, session earlier, on the different ways of joining fabrics. And, um, to walk away with just knowing at least one thing more than I knew when I went to a session or to a, um, it's just invaluable. And just the camaraderie and the wonderful people. And I will say that occasionally, there's been a few people that maybe we wouldn't like to, uh, party with later, but they kind of weed themselves out. If they're not nice, and they're not helpful, and they're being a poop, they soon go away. So that's the good thing about the group. Nobody pushes them aside. They just opt to go somewhere else. So I love all of you, and I appreciate your creativity and your, um, and the fact that you just permit me to come and play. And I try to be him myself, and I'm not responsible for Lindsay. And that's it.
Spoken like his parents.
I'm not responsible for me either.
Hi, um, this is Nancy. Our very, very first workshop was with Rhonda and Lindsay at Wildwood, with what seems like, you know, several lifetimes ago. And then the next time, we volunteered to help them in a workshop, and it's all history since then. You know, we have our whole little kiting world aside from our other many circles. And I think like many of the people who are out here, right, thanks, Gary. Gary, was that right? We, we have a long time thing with Gary about names, but, you know.
Didn't mean to interrupt, yeah.
Right. All the sessions were fabulous today. I'm sure they will be tomorrow. And thank you. Thank you for organizing whoever was, I guess Nick is the chief organizer here. Been great. And the technology is amazing.
Thank you. This is, this is definitely, uh, from, from Linda Larky and Umake, uh, stepping forward and saying, hey, you know, we don't want to have another year where we're not gathering with one another and sharing with one another. So let's make this happen however we can make this happen. Um, and yeah, so, so definitely a big shout out to her. That's, that's, she's the driving force. I just kind of, you know, put all the little cogs together. Uh, Craig, I see your hand is up.
Umake last year was the last time I hugged a woman before shutdown. And it was either Maggie, uh, Linda Larky, or Rhonda. I can't remember which. Doesn't matter. That's a memory that had to hold me over for a year.
Uh, I'll take credit.
Maggie's gonna fight you. I'm just saying, Maggie's gonna fight you.
He looks a lot like George.
Craig? Craig? That was the last time Rhonda and I hugged too.
Okay, I'm gonna turn the mic off so you don't hear the scream.
I'm assuming everyone on the call knows that, that Rhonda and Lindsay are married and a longtime kite couple, um, who never sit next to each other at dinner, uh, who say things like this. But, but just in case you haven't met them before, they, they really are a fun and awesome couple. And they do a lot of kids kite-making workshops. Uh, they do a lot of adult kite workshops. Um, but yeah.
And the reason we don't sit next to each other is not because we don't like each other. It's that we've heard each other's stories more than once, more than 100 times. And, and, and it's just, we just need to share with everybody else.
Lindsay, we've all heard your stories 100 times.
And if you knew Diane Morris, all she has to do is raise her hand. So if I'm with you, just raise your hand, and I know you've heard the story.
Wait, you don't have them numbered yet?
Oh, I can't remember them, and remember that, you know? That's, that's why I tell them over and over again.
Hey, Barbara Meyer, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, I was gonna say that bit about not sitting next to your spouse. That's actually a Umake rule. Those of you who have actually attended Umake, know that we announce at the beginning of the session, we'll sit with somebody else every meal, so that you have more stories to tell on the drive home. Twice as much, because you are exposed to different people. You know, your spouse or your friends from your area all the time. Go out and expand, and, you know, nobody's gonna bite you. They may actually have treats of some sort to share with you.
So nobody has come after us to say you shouldn't be sitting next to each other at Umake?
We rotate together.
You're kind of on the honor system, Larry. You guys can do whatever you want.
All you need to do next year is wave at us and we'll move.
And we'll say, oh!
Well, and, and the other thing is, is that don't sit with the same people over and over and over again. Mix it up.
We always rotate.
Yeah, mix it up. You know, I usually, I try to find somebody new, you know? Fresh meat, Rhonda calls them, yeah, so.
I'm not really, because people don't want to sit next to me twice.
Now, now, see, there's another person here that, that I'm looking at right now that has, uh, come to, uh, to a kite-making conference as a different person. And Rhonda was introduced to him and, uh, and thought that he was this homeless guy coming into Fort Warden in the, uh, in the food line. And, uh, it ended up, uh, it was Billy Bob, uh, and, uh, Billy Bob was bugging people, and, and she tried to get him kicked out, and then she found out that it was Scott Skinner. Anyway, so. Unmute yourself, Scott.
Oh, then she tries to get me kicked out again.
The second time was deserved, though, I'm sure.
All right, uh, Cat's been patiently waiting with her hand raised.
You know, I got, I got nothing. Anyway, I just, uh, I just wanted to say it's great to see all of you guys. I had to in and out all day today, and I won't be there tomorrow, and I'm sorry about that. But it was, it's great to see all your faces, and, and thanks for all the hard work. The workshops were great. Everything I heard was like, bravo. So way to go, guys, and, um, I miss you all. Wear a mask. We'll see each other soon. You know?
We can hope.
Yeah.
Yo-yo.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to, to summer on the, the West Coast.
All right, Mitch? I see your hand is up.
I just, um, the question, the question is about, uh, real-time, live, live, uh, um, face-to-face kinds of, of kite, kite, uh, weekend. And, but I tell you what I, what, these are great, and they're very educational, and you can attend everyone, and they're, they're really, um, revealing. But it's, but these three, you know, you arrive on Friday, and you start doing kites right away. And you do like, uh, you know, the odds of my doing an eight- and 10-hour day of kite-making at home, you know, not only do I get exposed to kites that I wanted to make and don't have either, uh, not clear about how to do it, or I don't have the ambition to clear the decks and start a new kind of kite, or to figure out how to make a drum box, or much less get a hold of all of this unusual hardware. But then I sit down for eight hours, you know, and during meals, I get to sit with people that want to talk about kites, that know about kites, that have stories about kites. You know, I, I fly alone, and my wife is not a flyer. And so to have a whole day of being able to chat with people who know what I'm talking about, who have things to contribute, it's, it's a real, it's a real treat. And it provides me with a kind of, um, discipline that I probably wouldn't be able to mount at home. So when I go home, I might have two or three new kites, but also half a dozen new techniques that I hadn't thought of, or new ideas. And, now, not just, I mean, for Umake, I've been going to Umake every year for like a decade or something. And so I know those people, and it's wonderful to see your sweet friends again. But aside from the social part, even those of us that are introverts always come away with really something important. So, so I, I love these virtual things, and I'm deeply grateful that you're making them. But I don't think they're gonna replace real-time kite festivals. There's something really special about sitting down surrounded by kite makers, guys that'll say, oh no, to put the needle there. There'll be something really special about that. So, that's my view.
Yep, absolutely. Um, uh, Grant Lovett, I see you have your, your hand raised.
Yeah, I was just saying, you asked how we got into retreats and all. And, uh, I went to the, 2004, I think, AKA Nats, at Dayton, and saw Robert Brassington kites. I was at that time building kites on my own and stuff. Saw his kites, and I somehow, through a magazine, found out about Fort Warden. I was planning on doing that, then I found out about this thing, Maker, and I go, shoot, I can drive to that. And I went to that maker in 2005, it was, and I've been to every event at CAFT I've been to. I've been out to Fort Warden, I've been to OKR, I've taught places, and, you know, and I always tell people, even at the classes, you're just looking around people next to you, you learn all kinds of stuff from just the person sitting next to you, new techniques and stuff, so. But I've met all kinds of great friends, always enjoy, you know, look forward to this, and I'll start with just seeing Brassington's kites.
So, so Grant, I believe that you're responsible for getting us to Umake some years ago.
Yeah, because I, there's not much crossover. So one of my jobs, Linda sets me out, or the maker group, is always try and talk up Umake and try and get some of the West Coasters or other folks to Umake.
You came to, you came to Keystone. You did Umake calls. We took you little Umake card home, and we showed up at, uh, Umake the next year.
Yeah.
I, and I had just had a rotator cuff repair.
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah, rotator cuff the first year, new knees the second year. Now we're all one piece.
Try and make as many as I can get to.
I'm trying to figure out how the Hoosier hooked up with Joyzy. Now I got it.
It was the, it was the Keystone in between.
We ain't in Joyzy, we in Pennsylvania.
I think that the whole rotator cuff thing was just an excuse to get Larry to carry her sewing machine.
All right, Sandy, I see you have your, your hand raised. Sandy Rose?
Hello, everybody. Hi, Scott. Hi, Grant. I miss you guys. Miss all of our kite flyers. So, our story, Randy's been going to Umake forever, and he builds a lot of kites, but we had our honeymoon at Umake three years ago. And Linda and the whole group made it very special for us. That's our story, and we'll stick to it. We're still happily married.
Honeymoon and bar mitzvah?
Did you sit at the same table?
Uh, yes, Larry, we do. But we kind of do what you, we kind of do what you guys do. We kind of go to a different table, but we do it together.
That's what we do.
Yeah, but, you know, Larry, they got the honeymoon suite, which is not often used.
No.
In the, on the campus that has a double bed and a private bath.
Oh, and we're talking the real, real-life double bed, so you know how.
Taking your dorm room in college, it was about that big, with a double bed.
But it was very special.
The company's good, but the sleeping arrangements are the pips.
All right.
All right.
But we wanted to, we wanted to thank the Umake people for making that weekend very special for us. Thank you.
Uh, Peter Loop, I see you've had your, your hand raised.
Sure. I, I was gonna share a, a story on, uh, sort of a post-retreat activity. I mean, you know, these things are all about people. Um, but, uh, this was out of the Oregon Kite Makers Retreat way, way, way back. And I was shuttling some people from, uh, the retreat home, uh, where they did Portland. And it involved Bobby Stanfield, and it involved, uh, Sam Houston, and it involved one other cutter. I cannot remember. But we stopped at our, at my house for a little while. And, you know, you got these kite makers, we'd been talking kites the whole trip back from the coast to Portland. And, uh, they, they're sitting in my house, and, and my kids' toys are out. Uh, if you remember the little connect toys. So you get a couple of builders with a couple of building toys like Legos, and, you know, all time stopped, and these guys were just sort of, well, could we make a kite like this? Could we, you know, and they were building with the toys. So that lasted a good two or three hours of them just, uh, sitting, building, playing with toys and, and things like that, and having a good old time. So just a, a story you may not have heard.
Along those same lines, at one of my very first OKRs, I was out there, and I rented a car and drove, and, uh, I think that's the year they had the flood and stuff. We had our classes, in Martin Lester's class, they asked, since I had a car, if I had mind driving Martin Lester back to the airport. So I had an hour and a half with myself and Martin Lester in the car, just to... So that was quite a treat.
I have to say, one of the, one of the advantages for me about, about, um, Umake is that, um, St. Louis is a convenient hub airport for several airlines. And so, um, I guess for the last maybe half dozen years, if somebody's coming from the West Coast, they stop at my house overnight. It's a great town, you know, and so there's, there's all kinds of things to see. So they stop in St. Louis for a day or two, and then we all drive out together to, uh, Umake and drive back at the end of the weekend. So I've met some really excellent and wonderful people. I have to keep them up. I mean, what are the odds of being able to talk somebody into taking a bedroom in St. Louis, Missouri? They kind of have a reason to do that. So St., so Umake is my reason.
Thank you very much, Mitch. The only problem was this last... That, last year, we were gonna go to the, uh, the Arch, and, and we were right at the start of COVID. So we didn't get to see anything at St. Louis, other than a pizza parlor.
Louis is still here.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's like, the virus will be gone, and the Arch will be waiting.
Hey, Lindsay, you had your hand raised? Yeah?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I was gonna, uh, respond to what Peter was saying about, uh, having people, uh, after a workshop, uh, you know, come to your home, and, and just the spontaneous creativity that we, we call it. And, uh, or, or here in Lincoln City, we have two festivals. We'll, we'll have, again, two festivals, and, and, you know, so we have some people stay at our house, some will remain anonymous. No. Uh, but, uh, you know, and it's great. You go out into the shop, and you start playing around, and, you know, and, uh, you know, Scott Hampton would be here, and he goes, oh, 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 you know, what do you have here? You know, and then all of a sudden, he goes home with parts and pieces, and then the day after he gets there, he starts sending you sketches of, uh, starts sending you sketches of what do you think of this what do you think of this and I'm going god damn doesn't your brain ever rest you know and you know and same thing you know you get we've had Ron Gibian he drives up you know and then then we'll work and so it's just I'd be over at my shop with Ronnie one night and and I was cutting out sign pieces for a for a local shop here a sign shop and I do all their router work for him and so all the scrap cutouts all the negative space was you know sitting there and he starts throwing the parts down on the floor and he goes oh look at this you know and so all of a sudden this kite is forming with these these random shapes and it's just so much fun so thank you for that
I'm gonna interject here and say that some folks may not know that Ron Gibian and Lindsay Johnson are kind of two of my mentors and whenever they get together and they're doing this like kite workshop thing at their house I get these random video chats it doesn't matter if I'm at work if I'm asleep or what I'm doing and here are these two guys laughing probably three sheets to the wind describing some sort of kite and it goes from a jumble on the floor to something that's like really put together and awesome to some napkin sketches and they're like see isn't this awesome and I'm like yes I'll have to see it in person
I I could I could put up that one video that you said we had to edit
No that's okay
No okay
But we'll move on to Kat Andrew and then Pam so Kat go ahead Uh oh I think she accidentally clicked the the way so when she comes back in we'll come back to her Andrew
Uh yes I'm not I'm not uh no no it was just something about the comment about about going to these events and ending up spending a large amount of time in the car with with Martin Lester brings back a memory of going to shaving form in Holland with with Peter Lynn and I ended up taking Peter Lynn from the coast of Holland back down to the Channel Tunnel and of course we're both in the car and and end up engaged in 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 really engaging conversation that's taking all of your time and all of your concentration until until Peter says why did that sign at the side of the of the roads road say Ausfahrt The implication being I've managed to on to to drive from the coast of Holland to Germany Instead of right I was an otoman yeah and this is the days before Sat nav so I had no idea where I was or how to get home it's from just getting so involved in in conversations with the kite flies about everything so that was just a little story
Love it uh we'll go back to Kat it looks like she she got signed back on
Yeah hung up you know so so I just wanna we're talking about kite retreats and kite making workshop and the very first one I ever attended was lucky enough for me was Junction and that's a kite retreat that's not happening anymore and I love all the kite retreats that are happening now I really do enjoy them but it would be super if somebody could bring something back like Junction and I don't know I'm gonna invite Scott Skinner maybe to say something about Junction because there was something different and I know it has to do with the organizers but there's also something else that Junction does that nobody else quite does so Scott you want to say something about Junction
Sure I I obligatorily raised my hand to get in but yes the thing I've noticed over the years about all workshops they're a function of their environment everyone is different they can't be the same you can't make them the same because your classrooms are different your time is different your meals are different everything is different the beauty of Junction was that time stood still there because Bill Lockhart and Betty Street owned that campus and they could do anything they wanted so that allowed them to have very long classes very immersive classes and then a lot of other activities as well that was unique and I don't think we'll ever find that place again because it's more about place than anything else the thing I love about all the workshops I've been to is that you get into the the spirit of that particular workshop you you can't make you make like Fort Warden and vice versa you can't make Fort Warden like the Oregon kite retreat they're all gonna be different and so it's valuable as a teacher and student to go to as many as you possibly can just to get that different feeling and that different creative vibe because that really is different to everyone
Absolutely Pam I see you've had your hand raised
Sorry had to figure out how to unmute this um my sister moved to Chicago about 27 years ago and I thought I would try going to a kite making workshop in Illinois thinking it was near Chicago which it wasn't and and you know this was way before Google right and I didn't know a single person there but after the weekend was over I left with 47 new friends and it was the most wonderful experience and about three years ago Phil Broder had he was trying to get more people to sign up for the Maryland kite retreat and I put a flip comment out out there and I said oh you know if it wasn't you know you know something about I didn't have a ride from the airport and he said he'd pick me up and that's what got me there I cashed in my I cashed in my miles they arranged it so I I was like the luckiest person there that weekend I Valerie Govig was my roommate was what a delightful delightful person you know got to meet people on the east coast that you just hear and read about in magazines and it's it's just you know I just love my kite family all of you so
Alright James Nord
Hello everyone I just want to kind of introduce myself I've never really been I've never been to a kite festival so I was really excited about this being online and I was hoping to attend one this year hopefully maybe later in the year but I'm really glad that I joined this and got to hear some of the speakers and so I know I've talked to a few of you over social media and and I've gotten a lot of help from a lot of people because of social media and I look forward to meeting you all at some point at a festival or a kite making but but I recognize a few of you and I've even talked to Ron Gibbon a few times getting me helping me get started making kites so hopefully I could someday we could meet in person or I can meet you all in person and everything so but I'm Jimmy by the way I know it says James but I go by Jimmy
Hey Jimmy
Cool Jimmy
Hey welcome Jimmy
Welcome Jimmy A bunch of friends who you haven't met yet
Jimmy where do you live
Oh I'm in Northern California in Eureka
Oh cool and yeah yeah your name's come up in conversation with Ronnie
Yeah I've talked to he's been a big help really encouraging I'm actually looking to my wife and I might be moving to Washington because of our jobs so that that might happen by summer we'll find out so I'm actually looking forward to it I hope it happens
Uh well you know who to contact I know we've been chatting quite a lot through the Fortuna Found website so
Yeah I didn't want to throw it out there too soon I didn't want to jinx it but
No worries alright Gary
Oh thanks no problem uh so yeah following up on Pam Hodges it's great to have a workshop in Illinois do you know how hard it is to convince people out here it's not in Oregon Okay every time you say the Laredo Taft campus they go oh in Oregon Illinois oh it's in Oregon
It is Oregon
Following up on car stories there's there's a car straight car story that I have that I was only involved in peripherally somebody on the on on this call and a friend of mine got to drive from a field a kite venue to somebody's house and compare notes along the way where where they discussed every mistake I've ever made since I found kite flying so that was kind of an interesting thing to hear about um Scott Steve Plouffe was trying to bring back Junction I don't know what happened with that I mean they did it a couple years it was a different venue maybe I don't know but they tried very hard to bring that back
There was a group that met there for several years Gary and the campus is actually open over Memorial Day weekend and so a lot of the local kiter's from Texas and Oklahoma and nearby went down and did what would be a mini Junction and I think Kat you probably know they they did it for at least 10 years I think
Yes they did
Maybe more and so I think it it proves again that the the really great workshops have somebody behind them who's really a pusher and those had Bill and Betty and you don't work harder than those two
Right so underneath underneath Bill and Betty was Judy Kingery and he took over organizing Junction and she ran it and died suddenly about four years ago and it just took the wind out of everybody's sails so
There it is okay yeah cuz there's always really there's always a personality
Always a driver
I don't care if it's yeah workshop kite festival it's it's if there's somebody behind it driving it on Andrew speaking of driving with personalities yes I've been known to invent the O-turn a couple of times Thank you
Since there's a brief lull there's always somebody who's got great fields set up with all of the lines in labeled bags with the markers in different colors so that even people who are total volunteers at the end of the day can put them away so that they can be gotten out in a very orderly fashion the next time said volunteer organizer Gary sets up the fields at a great festival
Even if you can't remember our names
Right even if our names
Wait a minute I got a Sharpie right here write them down so I don't forget again and who are you calling anal
You gotta realize folks there's an in-joke involved here
But it's Gary you know
But it's Gary
Alright Mike Mossman are you on
I am I'm gonna follow up on what Pam Hodges says I've been part of the MKS for several years and one time or another I was a shepherd there but if anyone anyone needs a ride from BWI out to the MKS I will personally be the year chauffeur both coming and going all you have to do is let me or John Han or John Burkhardt know and we'll take care of that I also have spare bedrooms you know things like that but it's really a lot of fun to go to the resort hotel out in Elegant City and there's a lot of nice restaurants around so I'm putting in a plug for next year we didn't make it this year because of the virus of course but we do have a contract for the next three years I think out at the turf valley golf resort come on over
Very nice thank you Mike and before I call on the next person I was just putting into the chat that there is an active poll going on in the chat if you click the symbol that has like several shapes on it a triangle on a top a square in a circle there's polls in there you should be able to see that feel free to participate you don't have to it's just a fun little thing asking how many different kite workshops in different locations you've been to alright Paul Auger it is your turn
Wait where are the little triangles and squares and circles oh I see it sorry
No problem hey I just wanted to follow in the footsteps of James and myself some of you might know me some of you might not but I'm Paul and I'm the guy that asks all the annoying questions in chat so thank you for putting up with me but like you know if I'm annoying you you need to blame Gary involved because he got me here a real quick story um now don't tell Gary I said this but he's one of my best friends and I I love the guy daily but you know I don't want him to know that um really quick story Gary and I made a new port Gary's running around Newport yelling and about five minutes the wind is gonna shift so change your position I'm a newbie kiter at that time and I'm looking at him who the hell is this guy who thinks he controls the wind and um in about five minutes my dumpy kite went flying into a 83 and I'm wheeling my line in swimming over a storm and then all of a sudden the worst thing that could have happened in my mind but and in my no when anything I forgot that's a bad thing but um yeah but um I in my head I'm thinking oh great my line broke my kite is stuck in a creek so I'm wheeling in and all of a sudden here's Gary with my hands tight in one hand and my line in the other and I often remind him that that is absolutely the ugliest fish I've ever caught in my life um but you know what what can I say Gary is an amazing person he's my kite mentor no anything else Gary has been wrong but we won't talk about that I love you Gary
Thanks Paul we could we could talk about that day that was very interesting day anyway thanks Paul
Alright Brian
Ray hi everybody there's a cut I'm dying to make and I can't wait till tomorrow's finisher project day so I gotta ask this question I've been measuring and remeasuring cutting the leading edge I know how to do the little flip it inside out finish but I cannot for the life of me tell where to cut this so that when it's done the angle the angle the you know the taper fold back I don't even know how to describe it but the leading edge where do I cut that and I figure today and I've got the right people to ask how do I make sure that this is the right length on the tape I'm sure there's people who know
Is anybody else as confused as I am I'm just curious
Cut it cut it long and cut it this permit later cut it long later
Yeah that's a good that's a good answer so cut it long trim later What kind of are we talking about what kind of leading edge are we talking about
I have Zeki quads they're based roughly on D10 I gotta actually put it on the floor it's easier
Quad
I think I get your question Brian it
Yeah, Spencer's your man.
Yeah, on a quadline kite, right, when I put a leading edge on, I, yeah, I cut a length tape that's longer than the leading edge. Okay, I have a little bit of excess. I use some double-sided tape to first put one side of the pocket on, and then I do my fold backs to make it a folded edge on the leading edge instead of just a raw cut. And then some more tape on the other side to fold it back again. So you're folding the leading edge corners to fit the kite, and so you can get the angles when you fold it.
So this is the type of finish that I want. And every time I look, I'm like, how do I make sure that this is going to be a straight line? Because this has to be sewn before this is sewn on. I can't figure out how to fix that.
I've got a bit of deck around here. So I mean, so if this is my pocket, right, and I want to have that angled, right, if I just fold it, it's just going to be a 90-degree angle here, right? But I want the angle that's going to match the kite. So say I have this stuck on the sail, the lines, the sail's coming up at an angle here. I'm first going to fold this guy back to match the angle. And then I'll make a matching fold on the other side. I'll kind of measure how far down this is, measure where this is at the center, make sure I pinch that center, and fold that in to match. So it ends up being something like that. And then when I fold it, it ends up being like that. You'll notice that I put the fold on the outside, because then I do a second layer, but there's the same thing with a fold on the inside to cover it. Right? So it kind of hides away things. You don't have stuff hiding on the inside. But so it's just a two-part fold, right? One fold to get the angle.
After you've attached it?
So I've taped, I've taped, say, this edge down to the sail, right? So here's your sail like this, right? So I fold this guy to match the trailing edge. Cool. So I've got the one. Now I fold the other side to kind of mirror that, right? And then I'm going to tape this back to the other side of the sail, and I'm going to end up with this sort of like folded, like that.
Just cut it long by like three or four inches total, and.
Yep. Yeah. And so if I cut it too long, I usually go, you know, say it ends up looking like this, right, where I have a little bit extra, I'll just kind of snip off the excess. But yeah, get that nice kind of folded, folded corner. Does that answer your question, Brian?
Kind of. I'm not sure that it would work though, but I guess if that's how it's done. I don't know. I just look at all the other kites and I look at what I'm making. And this is the last cut that I'm like, I'm really not sure about. But I don't want to take everyone's time because it's supposed to be happy hour, not frustration hour. But like, I don't want to wait. I want to make this cut and start sewing some more.
Was Brian able to see what you were doing? Because if you pin Spencer, if you hover over his, and there's that pin button, if you pin that, then that will put him up on your screen so you can see in better detail. Okay.
I could see what he was showing.
Okay. Because you can spotlight too. Spotlight whoever's speaking takes your whole screen so you see more.
Yeah, I could see it just fine. The folding there. It's just, I'm so scared of making this cut, or even worse, I get it sewn on, and it's done, and it's maybe half inch off on the top. So one side's a line, and one side's a half inch off. I'm like, now what?
And Brian, none of us have ever seen that movie, okay?
Never, never, never.
Everybody that you're looking at has been in that conundrum.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking, because you guys want to have answers.
You're in company, my friend, and yeah.
Yeah.
And then cut it big, figure it out later.
All right, Stone McLaren, I see you have your hand up, and we've got just a few minutes left in this session, so I want to make sure they get a chance to say something. Hey, Stone?
Yeah, I just wanted to introduce myself. And I'm from Washington State and involved primarily in North American-style fighter kites. But I just want to let you guys know I admire the craft and the personship and the engineering that goes into the kites you build. With the kites I build, everything is so finite in terms of taking, taking a traditional design and turning it into a very short line, fast kite where everything is so precise in terms of within an eighth of an inch anywhere. But it's really easy. You guys spend so much creative power in your builds that it's just amazing. They're beautiful work, and I mostly wanted to say that I admire the work you've put in the past of running workshops and helping run festivals, because it's been a big help in the 30 years I've been around this fighting community. So anyway, thanks. That's it.
Thank you, Stone. Sorry, I'm switching between the two sessions, making sure I have my audio working for both of them. So I'm speaking to both sessions right now, just to kind of give everyone a heads up. Scott Skinner's session will be starting in about 10 minutes. The happy hour session can continue to run. It won't close down until the last person leaves type of thing. So just one second. All right, so back to just the happy hour session. Rhonda, you are up next, if you would like to say something?
Oh, just a last parting shot of some of the notes that I dropped down as people were talking. And the question was, is why go to these retreats or kite maker things? And it's about the sound, the rustle of crisp fabrics, the hum or grinding of sewing machines, the distinct sound of the tick, tick, tick of a dull needle, and hearing Deb Cooley yell out, "Change your needles!" The chatter at the dinner tables, the tasting of various beverages, or sharing nibbly foods, the genuine laughter after a well-played, God, I lost the word, trick. I'll use the word trick. I know that's not the right word, but. And then my first Fort Warden, I think was 1989. I got picked up on the Oregon coast by Sonny Hamner, and then we hooked up with George Maurer and Ron Gibian. And we stayed overnight at my mom and dad's house, and they had a motor home where they decided to go out and sleep in because they didn't feel right about having two men sleep in the same bed. So I was in my mom and dad's house with three men that I didn't really know. And they had a dog that decided she was, he was going to run out the yard just as we were trying to pack up at Odark 30, a black Cocker Spaniel. And I think the sight of me chasing that dog across a busy highway, slamming him up against a cyclone fence, bringing him back to the house, throwing him inside and asking everybody, "Are we packed?" And they said yes, and we got into the car, and it was a pretty quiet travel for about an hour. And then they realized that I wasn't so ferocious after all, but I loved all of them. And that was one of my first memories, and we survived it. So so many of you have contributed to each other unfaltering and genuine and with love. And I can't thank you all enough for being who you are.
Thank you, Rhonda. All right, Kevin, I see you have your hand raised. And we have about five minutes left in this session, which again, this session can keep going. But Scott Skinner's session will be starting in about five minutes. So Kevin Coleman, just make sure you may have been muted for feedback.
Okay. Thank you. First of all, I just want to express my appreciation to everyone for the last conference, and again, for this one, because I've learned so much. Now, this is, the last conference was the first event of any kind I went to. It was a virtual one. I've never been to a physical in-person conference, although I really look forward to doing that. But almost everything that I know about kite making now, which still isn't very much, but it's something, I've learned from the conferences that I've listened to, from the videotapes that members have put up on Fortuna Found. And I just want to thank everyone who's shared themselves so freely in these conferences and to say how valuable they are. So thank you all.
And welcome.
And welcome. Yeah, you're one of them now.
Are you planning the next class?
Sorry, what was that? Am I planning my next class?
Yeah, what class are you planning on teaching?
I've thought about that already, so I'll think about that before the next conference, for sure.
All right, Grant Lovett, it looks like we have a little bit of time, if you want to throw something out there?
Just be real quick. Linda had to run off and do an errand. She wanted to make sure we thank you and Spencer for helping keeping this running smoothly. You know, we're all sad that we couldn't have Umake this year and stuff, miss all our friends. This is a nice way to stay in touch. And if you haven't been to Umake, check out the webpage. Hopefully next year it'll be just as big and better as usual. And if you haven't been, come on out and give it a try, because it's all this and more. So or any of the kite retreats around the country, it's just all this and more. So I just want to throw that in for Linda.
Good job, Grant.
Yes, absolutely. And definitely do look into the kite maker retreats. Fort Warden is up next, and they're doing a very special type of learning where you're actually going to build a kite through it. There's a whole Facebook group afterwards. There's two presenters. It's a lot more intensive course than what we've been doing this weekend. This weekend just kind of is giving us tasters and tests and hopefully, you know, getting everyone kind of involved so we can get into those bigger events. Jan, I see you just raised your hand.
Yes, I did. I wanted to say hi from Denmark, being so far away from everybody else. Of course, I've not been to any of your.
You're muted, Jan.
There you go. How much of that did you not hear? Most of it. Oh, yeah, I just want to say that, you know, seeing being, living so far away from all your nice retreats in the US, I haven't been to any of them, but so it's been a great joy to participate online from here. It's not that it's impossible to fight to the US. I just can't even fathom how I would do that with a sewing machine. But let's see about that sometime in the future.
You can borrow, you can borrow sewing machines if you need to.
Okay.
Someone listening to bring spare.
So Jan?
I have two. I have two.
I noticed you've been sewing the whole time, by the way.
I just finished like, you know, five minutes ago.
So Jan, do you know Dick Tunin here on the workshop?
No, I don't think so.
He's from Holland, so he's not far away, and he goes to Fano.
Yeah, I do know him, yeah.
I've been there since 97, so.
I've been there since 2005, I think, so.
And you have to meet here? And you have, and you had to meet here?
We probably, we probably met there as well, but there are like 5,000 people, so I can't remember all of them.
We always think there are more German kite flyers than Dutch or Danish kite flyers.
Absolutely. It helps a lot to speak German, so.
Maybe you've seen a few drumboxes flying there last year?
Yes.
Yes, that's one of my kites, what I organized there.
Nice.
So if you come next year, if we can come this year or next year, when there's a drumbox meeting, I'm involved in that.
Great. See you there then.
Okay.
I'll go on to the next workshop.
Hi, all.
If you buy a hybrid car, you get from the government 4,500 euros, and from Volkswagen 2,200 or something, just to support it. And that makes it cheaper than.